Right, Council, we will call this meeting back to order at six oh one P M. Uh, Council. More is open. Councilor Taylor.
Well. I'd just like to respond to uh, Councilor O'Shannon's comments or requests that we asked about the pathway of the park.
Please.
On. I, I think this is a fantastic project for uh, the town, uh, for the region. I think this will bring um, lots of benefits to the town, but there's some people that are against it. Sure, small number, but there are a vast portion of the population that are in favor of it. Um. Of all, has it, have they even done a detailed plan? From my understanding is they haven't done a detailed plan, so that's perhaps why the mayor doesn't have all the details that he has, because they haven't done that. And I'm again, like these other, some of the other projects, I'm in favor of funding the uh, Trail Society to do this work at eighty percent of the fifty thousand dollars or forty thousand, because I think on the long term, uh, this is going to be such a benefit. And we're not the sole people that are funding it. They, they uh, we're not, we might be the sole government agency, but there's another major corporate funder, maybe the private investors as well. So that's just where I get.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, and myself, and then Councilor O'Shannon. Uh, for myself, um, again, I, like many of the projects in the list, uh, I think we could scale back some of our funding in order to achieve some, some economy of scale savings. Uh, but I'm very much in favor of uh, funding this project. Think uh, particularly, we've set goalposts for uh, this project specifically, and without getting into them in detail, um, they've been very good about meeting those goals and continuing forward, uh, and, and some of those goals have been quite tough. Uh, that being said, you know, like any project, are the details in place yet fully? Nope. That's part of the process that they're going to go through. Uh, but at this point, I think they've been acting in good faith as a partner. And I think the benefit to tourism and recreation in the area for all the citizens uh, of both Hinton and the county, uh, there's, there's a lot to gain. Uh, Councilor O'Shannon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the concerns that have been expressed to me by citizens of Hinton regarding the town uh, continuing to fund this project, is they're concerned about um, the timelines up to this point and how that where the project's at at this stage, they're concerned about other funding partners and concerned that it seems like the town is the only government organization who's funding at this point. And I'm okay with continuing to fund if I know that that things are moving forward and they're moving forward appropriately. Council, we really talked about goalposts and I'd like to see some goalposts set on this funding, because I believe there currently is nothing, it's non conditional. I don't know what's an appropriate condition to put on the funding for this year. And I don't know if, if that's a council question, maybe admin question, I don't know who that question is best directed to. But I think the only way that I would be able to support this is knowing that it's tied to real meaningful progress, and I'm in a condition that they can meet that progress before they get the funding. Um. In talking to some of the other councillors, I believe when Westdale and Trail Society presented to us, they were seeking this funding to do some high level planning, that could be long, high level planning for rooting the conceptual plans, things like that. Okay, but what's the condition that that's tied to? And I guess that's kind of an open ended question, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure who's got any information that can help inform that. But I think that's, that's what I would need for me to be able to support proving it this year.
Uh, thank you, Councilor O'Shannon, I'll actually, I'll start with admin. Admin, if you don't feel you can answer this, but I want to make sure that you have a chance to respond first to Councilor O'Shannon's question. You know, are there any obvious goalposts, um, or, sorry, are there any goalposts that you think council could put in place and are there any that, you know, with some time you could recommend to council? You know, as part of that parking lot that we've been discussing through the budget uh, workshop process.
Yeah, through the chair. If council committee would like to go forward with that recommendation, I think what I would suggest is making this a noted project. And so prior to ensuring that you probably would come back to council, also can determine whether we get it is sufficient, but there's been a few large outstanding pieces of information that we've been waiting on. Uh, ownership is one. Uh, liability, who is going to pay to maintain it, who's going to pay to construct it, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of big outstanding questions that I think you have, and those are some of the ones that we've determined society to try and get. They're just not quite ready and to have answered all those questions, but my recommendation is that for this process, we just have it as a noted project, so when we do come forward, we can make sure that some of these questions are answered prior to, to the order of this funding.
Thank you, C A O, Councilor Chambers.
Uh, kind of answered, but I guess in general, I just, I, I support from the direction of both Councilor Taylor and exactly what Councilor O'Shannon brought up is what I was, was going to say that, you know, I'd be more comfortable supporting it knowing specifically what was to be achieved with this funding. Um, I think that would be important for me, I think that in any project at this stage, um, there needs to be some general accountability to be continuing to move forward in a this really appropriate manner, so certainly looking at something like the parking lot or or setting some type of objective, whatever that looks like, uh, would be important for me as well.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Taylor.
My suggestion to provide you some comfort would be that uh, this would be the consensus that I would put forward. Um, so I'm putting this consensus forward, you can just seek consensus to fund forty thousand, like I said, eighty percent of the pathway of the park, subject to new government funding, uh, equal to the amount that the town has already put in. So, it would be that by that point, it will include in a hundred and forty. And so if we, if they don't get at least a hundred and forty from another government agency, to show that they can get somebody else interested in it, then, then that's the milepost I'm suggesting. Like. So you, you can show your support by going forward or going against it. That's the consensus I'd like to put. And I think that's a reasonable milepost.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. Uh, Council, while that's being captured, um, any, any discussion on that?
Do you want me to finish?
Yes.
Oh, where are you, seek consensus to fund forty thousand dollars for the pathway to the park, park project, subject to uh, new government funding equaling the amount that the town of Hinton has already put in. The intent is that, if they, if, if they can get, you know, funding equal to the amount that you've already put in from another government agency, not a corporate agency. Because, because they, they almost already have that with another corporation. That, then, then that would satisfy your concern. Or may satisfy your concern. That's the intent of that. So last year, we gave them funding, it was contingent approval. And it was contingent on uh, them telling us that they're going to take care of the, the maintenance, the training. And that is just, my understanding from what we just heard, that's just about to come to us. This year's funding is contingent on that.
I have the mayor, Councilor O'Shannon, and myself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, through the chair, I'm just looking for some clarification, Councilor Taylor, I'm gonna initially said this, you put a dollar value uh, at the end of this and uh, is, it's written on the board here, it says uh, that the town of Hinton has already put in, that's very unclear to me, I don't know what we're voting on here, can we put a solid dollar value there?
Absolutely, I agree with you. Administration would have to help me, how much have we given them already? And including the forty thousand.
I think it's one hundred and forty thousand.
So it would have to be a hundred and forty. Perfect. Um, subject to new government funding equaling a hundred and forty thousand.
I'll go back to the mayor, Mr. Mayor, does that uh, answer your concern?
I think if everything after a hundred and forty thousand gets deleted here.
So, the intent is new government funding other than new simple funding. From the town of Hinton.
Councilor Taylor, I'll will rely on you to help clean that up if you can.
The committee seek consensus to fund twenty thousand to the pathway of the park, subject to new government funding equaling a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Do I have to say other than the town of Hinton?
No, I.
I think that's clear enough.
Uh, Councilor O'Shannon, myself, and Councilor Chambers.
Just first off, I want semantics, but it should be equaling at least or a minimum of a hundred and forty.
Yes.
Because obviously it can exceed.
Yes, yes, that's intense. So equaling at least.
Uh, and I didn't, and I didn't want to, so that would give me some additional conflict, that the town of Hinton is not the only government partner that's, that's investing in this program, if another government partner can be brought to the table, who, who's willing to put in at least what the town has put in, that does give me quite a bit of comfort. Um, and the, the, the one part that is still missing though is uh, uh, viable goalposts of what, what's reasonable progress between now and the end of twenty twenty five towards moving this towards completion. And a- as I said, that's, that's one of the concerns that I get from people in the town of Hinton is is um, the, the question of why we're continuing to invest in something and we don't know if the future of it is certain or not at this point. Uh, this is now potentially a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And there is no surety that this is actually ever going to get built. And that's what's being brought to me from the citizens voicing their concern. So. This helps definitely, but I still would like to see some kind of progress condition attached as well.
Thank you, Councilor O'Shannon, I have myself up next, um. Just my question for clarification is um, whether, whether the donation uh, or whether the inclusion or donation of materials or property in kind would contribute to that. Um, if we're talking about strictly cash funding, or Councilor Taylor, if you're intent and uncomfortable with whatever your intent is, um, would include materials, land, resources in kind, would that be part of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, or are you talking about strictly cash?
Well, I'm thinking if, if it's a private corporation, it might not be cash, but I'm not talking to them, I'm talking government. So Alberta government, Yellowhead County, maybe somebody, something else, federal government, it would probably be cash, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it for me, Councilor Chambers.
Uh, thank you through the chair, I guess to Councilor Taylor, I, that was my question as well is, when you say government funding, is that any order of government, is that the Yellowhead County, the province, or the federal government?
Yes.
Who would be?
It would be just.
Councilor Race.
Thank you, Chair, so what is the timeline on us waiting for this new government funding? How long do we wait before we put our four thousand?
Uh, Councilor Taylor, I think that's a question best addressed to you, it is your, initially it was your consensus request.
Oh, well, my thought would that, 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 that like offer is good for two thousand twenty five. It's the two thousand twenty five budget, so when two thousand twenty five is gone, if you have any medics, I'm gonna draw the table and the document to do budget here. Does that have to be in there?
Administration clarification, would that be your understanding as well, if it was conditional?
Concern we added in for clarification, but considering that this you know, this is talking about this budget here and this budget allocation, I think it's clear, I don't think it's included. Um, and just one question, if I could share.
Please.
Uh, this also includes grants, right, so if you receive a grant for a grant for something um, on this project, that all, that all counts, correct?
Yeah, grants count.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just make sure, we're going to be patient, uh, we'll uh, if men did recommend a clarification in the notation, so if we could, we can capture that, uh, C A O, would you mind helping uh, to make sure that that's captured? Um. Just to. In the twenty twenty five budget, would that be suitable?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, I have Councilor. Perfect, thanks, Ms. Davy Campbell, uh, thank you, C A O, Councilor Race, and Councilor O'Shannon.
Just quickly, um, C A O, what is putting this in the parking lot?
So, uh, through the chair to members of committee, so we are include, the consensus here is to include forty thousand dollars. It's just contingents on that hundred and forty thousand to go into the order, so that's going in the budget. Uh, but it won't be paid unless they can prove to us that that hundred and forty thousand is being received.
Okay. So, I, you know what, I didn't say that properly, so can you put me back in queue?
Sure. Councilor O'Shannon, Taylor, then Race.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just really quickly, uh, just a clarifying question to administration about their part, their fine question regarding grants. Um, to me, it would have to be a government grant, not a private industry grant, like we want transnational grant, I believe they give out some things like that, so, but who does that understand, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, then Councilor Race.
The other concern you, you bring about in progress is very, is very, I think, valid. So, uh, I, I seek advice or help on this one. And that would be that this might help, uh, with that concern in that, that construction start in two thousand twenty five. Some evidence that construction is starting in two thousand twenty five, and that they get the hundred and forty thousand extra money. Because then we'd be able to say something's happened. We gave money and something happened.
I guess, Councilor Taylor, um, my, my question for you for clarification, are you asking a fellow councillor to make that amendment to the consensus request on the floor?
I guess I am, if, yeah, I was important, that is, I'm just saying. If you don't want to make it, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, I have Councilor Race and Councilor O'Shannon.
Okay, thank you, sir, so my question to admin is, if this is not moved ahead, what does putting this item in the parking lot, like we had talked previously, that's what you put in the parking lot? What, what does that mean?
Through the, the chair, uh, my suggestion was to include it as a noted project, which is kind of our process for included in the budget as a placeholder, but we need to talk about this a little bit more before we decide to fund it or not.
And does that mean bringing us more information on this? Thank you.
Councilor O'Shannon.
Uh, if you, Mr. Chair, I would like to propose, and we're gonna change it slightly to what Councilor Taylor was suggesting, though. I think maybe actually starting construction in twenty twenty five might be a little bit too ambitious. So I'd like to propose an amendment to include and all approvals required to begin construction um are received in the twenty twenty five budget year. It was, it was actually just stick that in after the one hundred and forty thousand dollar part, but that's fine too. Can I speak to that?
Please leave, they're good.
Yeah, so this motion with these conditions, I'm comfortable to support this moving forward now. I think that's some pretty significant conditions that the uh, Trail Society would have to meet to be able to get the additional forty thousand dollars, that's um, I mean, they have to get another part, government partner on board, and they have to be ready uh, to begin construction by the end of calendar year twenty twenty five. I think if they can achieve that, that is pretty strong indicator that the project's going to move forward, so I'd be okay to support it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, uh, thank you, Councilor O'Shannon, and myself, and then the mayor. Uh, for myself, I will support the amendment on the floor, uh, I, I'm not trying to be flippant, but it feels like one of those punishments where somebody gives themselves the punishment, it's so difficult um, that, you know, it would be quite impressive if they could make it. Um, I think it's, it's important to establish those uh, those goalposts. And as Councilor O'Shannon said, if both of those things uh, can be done, that's significant. That really means that that project's moving forward, so I'm comfortable supporting that. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, through the chair, uh, I guess I'm looking for a little bit of clarification from Council O'Shannon on uh, what's intended by all approvals required to being in construction, I'll just give you a quick background. I'm a little bit concerned with this and that we're potentially setting them up to get uh, permits and approvals to construct a parking lot in the town of Hinton that goes to a trail that immediately leaves Hinton and goes nowhere. Are you specifically here looking for, for county approvals, is all approvals, all of the approvals all the way for phase one of the trail? What's the intent there?
Uh, Councilor O'Shannon's.
By all approvals, the intent was to encompass all approvals, so town of Hinton, if, you know, that's whatever's required from the town of Hinton, whatever's required from Yellowhead County, whatever's required from the province to be able to um, begin construction on the project in its current iteration, so that means the whole thing up to, I believe they're, they scaled back a proportion of that phase one, I believe that's two phases now. Correct, yeah, so for phase one, I guess, yeah, that's the intent, it's not, the intent isn't just to get the approval for the town of Hinton portion, it's for the whole trail construction that they are currently proposing.
Thank you. Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, the clarification, if you included the words in phase one, because that goes to Wild West Kinky, and that's all there is seen in the floor, I think. I don't really want to do that.
Councilor O'Shannon.
Fine with that, if that's the appropriate terminology, if it's uh, for phase one, if that's the appropriate terminology, then that's the trail up to their, their scaled back proposal, I'm fine with that anyway. Mr. Council has some opposition.
Council, is there any opposition to adding the clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just, if we're going to add the wording around phase one, because it is their wording, could we specify it to the phase one as presented to council at their last presentation?
Any opposition, Council? Seeing none, we'll just give Ms. Davy Campbell a, a chance to add that in there. Um, let's see here, uh, budget year and all approvals required to begin construction uh, required to begin construction
to phase one are received in the two thousand twenty five budget year. Uh, there you go, let's take out the other phase one then.
Council, seeing as the clarification the consensus, uh, pardon me, that the no opposition belongs to all of council, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. That committee seek consensus to fund forty thousand dollars to the pathway to the park, subject to new government funding equaling at least a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty five budget year, and all approvals, pardon me, all approvals required to begin construction to phase one uh, are received in the twenty twenty five budget year. I would say, uh, sorry if I may, Council, to begin construction uh, through the completion of phase one. Council, are you comfortable with that? Mr. Mayor.
Well, and if I just may, as presented to council on October.
On. You said October eighth, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and technically it's, it's presented to committee on October eighth.
But Ms. Davy Campbell, you are. To committee on October eighth two thousand twenty four. Okay. Council, we'll read through it one more time, again, just because we're taking a little latitude with our consensus, but that committee seek consensus to fund forty thousand dollars to pathway to the park, subject to new government funding equaling at least a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty five budget year, and all approvals required to begin construction through the completion of phase one, as presented to committee on October eighth, twenty twenty four are received in the twenty twenty five budget year. Council, do you feel uh, Councilor O'Shannon, then Councilor Race?
Mr. Chair, the only suggestion I would, the only change I would suggest is to change uh, instead of two phase one, it should maybe say both phase one.
Council, any opposition to that? We're good with that, Ms. Davy Campbell, if we can change two to of. Councilor O'Shannon, does that reflect it? Good, Councilor Race.
So I would not um, support this, I can, a lot can happen in the next year, I can see them coming back saying, you know what, we couldn't get all these approvals because of this, this, and this, so give like an extension. So, I would prefer to see it in the parking lot, so I will not support this.
I guess I have a question for that, then, Councilor Race, what do you expect to happen to the parking lot?
The administration will um, research this more and bring us back to more information, that we're prepared to deal with it directly during this um, budget deliberation.
So I, I'm just gonna allow myself to latitude to speak to that, then. So, again, I, I think it's, it's up to council to own this, I think these are some pretty stringent goalposts that we would set. And there's really no additional information that administration brings back. And really what this is up to is it's up to the proponent to to develop and need some, some pretty strict guidelines in order to receive that funding. Uh, that's just for myself, uh, Counselor Oz, and then Counselor Race.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what Councilor Race is saying, but I think based on what I heard from the C A O, this is still going to be a noted that nothing is going to be spent until, you know, if it is brought back to us in two thousand twenty five, whether or not the hundred and forty came to us or didn't come, so it's a noted project, um. So, yeah, it's regardless, it's going to come back to council in the year twenty twenty five, is what I understand, so.
Council, or pardon me, C A O.
Uh, thank you, Chair, so my understanding, based on the con- consensus, is that it's not noted, and that if they meet the milestones that we have set out here today, then they would be paid unless committee uh, dictates otherwise.
So my apologies if I may. So if they meet the, the criteria, then yes, then it would be. Uh, but if they don't, then that comes back to us, understand that, very? Yes, yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilor Race and Councilor O'Shannon.
Thank you, sir, so then, uh, admin, if they don't meet the criteria, then they come back and tell us and possibly ask for extensions, or, and then we have to maybe nothing except.
Through the chair, they certainly have that. They certainly have that option available to them. Otherwise, they're be, they'll be discussing this at their regular time for the next budgets.
Councilor O'Shannon.
Mr. Chair, just in terms of Councilor Race's concerns, um, I think that as Councilor McGee said, council holds this, these are the conditions we're putting on it to give you forty thousand dollars worth of taxpayer money. If they don't meet it by the end of the year, that's okay, they just don't get it, they can come and present again ask for money for the twenty twenty six budget, or they can present and ask for an extension, and then also at that time would, would deliberate and decide if, if that's what they're, if they want to grant the extension or grants additional money or refund or whatever it is that, that is the condition that made it so that they couldn't comply with the conditions that we're putting in the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, then we'll call to question. And we'll just wait for it to populate. We have one more read.
The clarification, we're voting on the amendment, correct?
Yes, we're voting on the amendment. So I'll just make sure that it's, Ms. Davy Campbell, this is an amendment that we're, that you have populated?
Well, this is about five amendments to the original.
I don't, no, there was, there was one amendment, but we had some clarifications just on the wording.
Yeah.
On things like the budget year and the as, uh, the completion of phase one.
Only about it.
Yeah, so it's, the amendment is the, in the budget year and all approvals required to begin construction through the completion of phase one, as presented to committee on October eighth, yeah. Sorry, Council, we'll just give a sec, Councilor Taylor, I saw your hand.
Oh, I was gonna ask the same question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Admins, for it, it's so sweet, thank you.
I'm getting hangry hot.
Again, Nancy. I order you all to sign from, uh, on that, you're gonna see if I can, if we started. And then, and then.
Yeah.
No quotes.
We'll put it on the, on the, on the.
Here.
About the matters.
And. Twenty twenty five. Yeah, great, we're not supporting. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So counsel, we are voting on the amendment. That committee seek consensus to fund forty thousand dollars to the pathway to the park. Subject to new government funding equaling at least a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In the twenty twenty five budget year and that all approvals required to begin construction. Through the completion of phase one, as presented to committee on October eighth, are received in the twenty twenty five budget year. Councillor O'Shannon.
Mister Chair, sorry, just for clarification. Because it's only in the amendment they're voting on, it's just the portion that's in, uh, parentheses. What they said, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and all approvals required, that part's correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mister.
Administration, that's your understanding? We're only voting on the amendment portion which is in quotations, correct? Okay, perfect. Counsel, any further questions? Seeing none, then we will call the question. If you can please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel. So we're back to, uh, the main motion then. Which has now been amended, so we'll simply refer to it as the motion. What was that vote called? Unanimous. Thank you. Uh, so, counsel, we are voting, uh, on the following consensus request, that committee seek consensus. To fund forty thousand dollars to the pathway to the park, subject to new government funding equaling at least a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In the twenty twenty five budget year and all approvals required to begin construction. Through the completion of phase one, as presented to committee on October eighth, twenty twenty four. Are received in the twenty twenty five budgetary year, budget year, pardon me. Counsel, any last discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call this to question. If you could please vote electronically. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you, administration. Counsel, the floor is open. Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. I would, um, seek consensus to include, um. The recommended allocation from STARS into the budget.
Thank you, councillor Race. Counsel, there has been a request to include, uh, the allocation from STARS. Councillor Race, just as a clarification for twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Councillor O'Shannon, then councillor Oz.
Just a question, if we're not proposing any changes, do we have to go through them all and? And move to include them?
Uh, we'll move to administration. Admin, uh, if you would please.
Uh, through the chair, the way I saw it working is that we, we had to list if there's anything we didn't want in there. To exclude that and then at the end, we could just make a motion on all of the points. Because my assumption is that we wanted, uh, more to move forward than to be extracted. So just for ease of the process.
Councillor Race, do you want to withdraw then?
Certainly.
Counsel, any, uh, any, uh, opposition to withdrawing the proposed? Any opposition to withdrawing the proposed, oh, it sounds good. Councillor Oz, I'll have you next, in queue.
Yeah. Well, along those lines on this particular matter of the STARS. Would this be something, and I'm throwing it out to counsel, we've been talking about that safety reserve. Would this be something more appropriately out of that safety reserve into taxation, um, potentially? It looks at twenty thousand, it's not a, it's not a huge ask. Um, but we do have. A safety reserve for safety and I feel this falls into the safety zone, um, so I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but. I think this would be a more appropriate spot for this to come from. Uh, it may be now ending to the future as well, but I'm curious of any thoughts.
Counsel? Mister Mayor.
Thank you, and through, uh, the chair to councillor Oz, uh, the way I see it, reserves are. Property tax funded, so it's a, a shell game, be property tax funded anyways.
Right.
Uh, speaking specifically to STARS, oh, it's my back, my professional background is in, in. Helicopter-based paramedicine. I've never had a great experience with STARS. And I understand why Yola Head County doesn't support them. But they came in here and we do, on average, out of our hospital, eight to ten STARS evacs a year. And for twenty thousand dollars, we're, we're giving effectively two thousand dollars per helicopter evac from our hospital, per patient. Just to, to keep them around, keep them running. That's a bargain of a deal. That does need to be covered starting in the helicopter. If that's what it takes, we're all kicking it together. Every municipality in the province outside of Hill County helps fund STARS. I'm in support of this. I think we actually are just for our money and with the state of our hospital and the emergency closures. I absolutely want STARS to show up. And pick up somebody if they roll into our hospital, see a nurse and there's no doctors available. Without any doubt, so I'm, I'm in support. Thank you.
Uh, I'll put myself in queue, uh, in short to respond. Yeah, I would support that. Councillor O'Shannon.
Just a question, is, is there a consensus request or are we just discussing?
There's no consensus request. Okay. Counsel? Uh, there's no one in the speaker's queue, there was no consensus request on the table. Counsel? Councillor Taylor.
I mean, off STARS, can I?
Yep.
I seek to remove yellow, uh, Community Futures West Yellowhead off the list, ten thousand.
Okay. Uh, do you care to speak to it, councillor Taylor?
That's a different organization. They are, um. Um, they're basically, uh. A loner of last resort for, uh, for folks, federal government loner of last resort for folks. I, I, I just, uh, don't think we should be doing that. We, we, if, if the intent was, was for economic development, which might, might have been. You know, we, we have, uh, a number of people hired on who are working on strategic projects for us, and we forward our actual agenda. And we try to grow the town. I would rather us concentrate on that and not give another organization.
Um, I have a question because I've never served, this is one of those committees I've never in my time served on as a councillor. Um, so especially for our councillors who have been a part of Community Futures West Yellowhead. Um, I'm really interested. To know what your thoughts are on the connection between our local Chamber of Commerce. Uh, and Community Futures West Yellowhead. I have an assumption of how I think they would feel about it, um. Would anyone care to comment on the strength of that connection? Like, do you think our local Chamber of Commerce sees Community Futures as an integral part of our local business community? Mister Mayor.
Thank you, uh, as I'm one of the newer members of the Community Futures Board, as we just, uh, put councillor Race and myself. Uh, I have been attending the meetings, uh, for, on and off for the past year. And what I can say is Community Futures West Yellowhead has five partner municipalities, have all put in ten thousand dollars annually to the operation of this. Community Futures West Yellowhead is also headquartered and located physically in the town of Hinton. Uh, and Community Futures West Yellowhead has administered millions of dollars in loans. And great, small and medium business supports to businesses in our community. Far greater than the, the ten thousand dollars we put in. From my perspective. We're getting a lot more for our money than, than we're putting in. Uh, and it is, like I said, it's a partnership between five municipalities that are located here in Hinton. We're getting the best deal out of everybody and everybody else intending to fund us this year.
Uh, councillor Race and councillor Taylor.
Thank you, sir. I've only attended the one meeting and then I spent time of Nancy blocking the volume. Here in the futures, but it's my understanding that they receive three hundred thousand dollars of federal money every year. And that has not been raised since, uh, same three hundred thousand every year to pay for their, um. Their building, their utilities, their benefits, their staff, everything. So this can really does have to do with the community. So, I will not support this.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
I would ask the two councillors that have spoken, uh, since they think that this ten thousand is really helping the community. Can you speak to what the ten thousand was last year and two thousand, uh, what's the ten thousand that we've given them as balance?
I can have. I can.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, councillor Race. Counsel? We have a consensus request on the floor. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, uh, we'll wait till it populates and then we'll call it to question.
I would speak to it.
Oh, yeah, councillor O'Shannon.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So. To councillor Race's comments, I've, it's unfortunate. Until a couple of years ago. Community Futures didn't get funding from a member municipalities. They were always historically funded through the federal government, as has been stated. That funding hasn't increased for quite some time. But does that make it the municipality's responsibility to pick up that slack? This is again, another example of a, a higher order of government downloading responsibility. Indirectly, but still downloading responsibility to the municipality that the service helps. Basically. What was presented the first time around was. If we don't get help from our member municipalities, we're going to have to cut programs because we don't have enough funding. To be able to keep doing what we've historically done. So the member municipality stepped up and helped to fund. But I'm not really sure that we should. Maybe the answer to some of all of this. Government downloading is to say, well, we're not doing it either. So, the, it's the Fed's responsibility to fund it, is their program, it's, it. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to send a message to these other orders of government when they're continually. Downloading these responsibilities to the municipalities and the municipalities just continue to pick up the slack. It, it, it really isn't achieving anything. In terms of impact on the taxpayers, the taxpayers are paying for it, they're just paying through for it with. Immunicipal dollars instead of federal dollars. I'm not sure what the answer is, and, but I'm getting really tired of having to. Prop up programs that are supposed to be funded by other levels of government but aren't adequately funded.
Mister Chair. Thank you, councillor O'Shannon. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Councillor Taylor.
The only other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to remind council that in the letter we got from Community Futures, they didn't show up in person, and maybe they had good reasons. But the letter also did not describe what last year's ten thousand dollars was. So they didn't list their accomplishments in that letter.
Thank you, councillor. Counsel, any further discussion? Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. Can we postpone this until, um. You know, for. Another time until we can get information on what that ten thousand dollars has been used for and what is going to be used for this year?
Procedurally, administration.
Uh, Chair, I, I could probably just answer that. So I believe that they included it to their. An annual shareholder report, um. So total about, total value loans is about of, uh. Four hundred and thirty-four thousand, that's, that was six unique loans. Um, and twenty-two jobs created, um. The number of community-based projects awarded. Twenty-eight, and total number of local and regionally-based community strategic plans developed and were updated, nine. Uh, total number of business training session participants, two hundred and sixty. And total number of business advisory services rendered were five hundred. Now that's the entirety of West Yellowhead, it's not sort of seventeen, but.
Thank you, C A O. Councillor Race, does that provide you with information?
I, I do, I support another question.
Go ahead.
If you, um, can you kind of break down what the ten thousand dollars has been, um, utilized for this past year? I don't, I think the lemonade, Dave. Keep all of that down.
If you could, uh, Chair, possibly move to the next queue and that would give me a few minutes.
Counsel, any further discussion? Councillor Race, we're just writing on the C A O. But it, so to answer your question, councillor Race, I think procedurally we have, um. We could, a councillor could seek consensus to table an item. That of course would be, I think it's non-debatable. Again, I apologize, counsel, I'd have to look at our procedures. But we would vote on that, if you think it's important enough, or we can vote on the consensus request on the floor. Councillor Chambers.
I was just trying to look back at the, I have a short stint on Community Futures and we did speak about this. Last year, about this time, and I, I do remember there was, at the time, and I can't speak to it at the moment, I tried to find my notes, but, um. Couple of. Key things within the community that I remember were being funded. I do believe lemonade may have been one of them. Um, I almost want to say maybe that daddy program for the kids, it's, uh, news. Uh, with Y E T I is the acronym, but I, I. I would be interested in more information personally, just about. That again, you know, what is, is it same objectives as last year? Is this continuation of longstanding programs? A little more information, I think, would be helpful to understand what that impact is. Or maybe even data grown down by Hinton versus the region. I don't know, but.
I have, uh, I'll put myself in queue next. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the consensus request on the floor. I think I share a number of the same concerns as councillor O'Shannon. And then again, this is one of those things where it comes down to needs versus wants. Uh, and for myself, the program has been initially funded by the, the federal government. We can't just keep taking this on. For the sake of, you know, funding things that are not, not essential services to the town. This is just one of those things where the feds, if they want to have this program, then they need to step up and add it. Doesn't mean that it's not valuable. But just because they start something, uh, and then say, oh, well, we're not going to increase funding for it. Oh, by the way, it's now risking your community. Okay, well, that's not fair to us. Uh, so that's, yeah, just, that's enough on that. Counsel, uh, I'll, Admin, do you have any further additional info?
Through the chair, though, there, there's nothing I can find specific to Hinton other than. The funding going into their, obviously, financial story.
Counsel, we have a consensus request on the floor. Any further discussion on this before, Mister Mayor?
Thank you. During the charity of administration. We're members of Community Futures West Yellowhead, we've got two councillors on the board. Uh, if we were to hold our funding from our civic agencies this year, what effect would that have? Terms of our relationship with Community Futures. Do you have any idea at this stage?
Through the chair, I'm not sure, um, and I don't know if funding is a requirement for civic board. We'd have to probably look at the terms of preference, but I believe that it's a pass. We hadn't funded, funded this organization, still had people on the board, so, oh. Uh, I'd have to check, but I don't know if there would be any. Um, or repercussions on, on.
Mister Mayor.
Councillor O'Shannon. Uh, to Mayor Niss's question. Um, in my understanding, being on Community Futures in the past. This, this is a funding request, it's not a requirement, it's not a requirement of any of the member municipalities. And I know there was at least one here and at least one municipality who chose, whose councils. Whose council chose not to, uh, comply with requests for funding.
Councillor Oz.
I'm just gonna say quickly, uh, I'm gonna be in support of this, but at the same time, because I agree with. The downloading, you know, but I think that at the same time, these are consensuses, so if. You know, Community Futures West Yellowhead decides and says, hey, I want to. Go speak to council, then they have that option as well. So, uh, you know, I think that, uh, maybe then we can have some understanding then. It might, might change our ways at this time, it's just consensus right now, so, but I will be in favor.
Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. I'm really happy, um, coun- Thank you, sir. I'm really happy, um, Counselor Haas said what you just said. However, for, um, Haas to remove this totally, I need more information, so I will not support this.
Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, we will call the question that Committee seek consensus to remove Community Futures West Gillhead. From the civic agency support list in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Council, if you can please vote electronically now. And that is carried four to three with Mayor Nissen, Counselor Race, and Counselor Chambers against. Council. Uh, the floor is open. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to move that we table five point three to, uh. Either a future meeting or a future time at this meeting and move on to items five one one, five point two on our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Nissen. Uh, in addition, just, uh, point of inquiry, we do have, uh, placeholders for budget in upcoming, uh, community of the whole. Regular meetings of council. Is it reasonable to assume that if we table this, we could see this item at one of those place order, placeholder, uh, items?
Yeah, through the chair, I'm thinking that for this type of conversation that connects, you get a whole meeting.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments on that, or does that sort of?
Uh, the only comment I'd have or I'd speak to it is we have other items on the agenda that we do have to get to today, and we're getting a little bit long into the evening now, and I do believe that we could probably spend the next hour talking about item five point three if we wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council, while that's, uh, appearing there, uh, any conversation, pardon me, any question, any, uh, debate? Counselor Taylor?
Totally agree, we could spend the next three hours on this.
Good. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll wait till it populates and then we'll call the question. Council, uh, we will, uh, let's see here, call, call the question that we table item five point three to a future, uh, committee meeting. Uh, Council, if you could vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Council Taylor, uh, who will join us again. Council, we will move on to item five point one. Uh, the public notification bylaw number two thousand and two. Administration, if you would, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll turn this over to Ms. Porvo.
Thanks, we, uh, through the whole committee, this item is before you today, uh. Because it adds another level of. Security if we fail. Changes to the Minnesota Government Act of twenty fifteen, so there was other ways you could get your message out rather than just print media. We had a, and. This bylaw was already in the queue to be coming forward, but we did have an incident point recently with our local print media where. A page of our advertising was forgotten and it was for some legislative items that had to be, uh, communicated through, through print media. So we did, uh, make arrangements for it by having another online page added to it, so that was sufficient. But with pa- uh, passing of this bylaw or having this bylaw come forward to a future meeting of council. It gives us that next layer of security that if something does happen, we have alternative means of getting the message out. We have no plans to change what we're doing currently. We are going to continue with the same. Communication methods that we have in place. Just wanting this there in the event that potentially maybe we don't have a newspaper in one month, we could be vacations or something, so. Um, just has it there in case of. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Haas.
Uh, no questions, you answered my question already, so I'm gonna move the committee direct administration to bring public notification bylaw number. Two zero zero two to a future regular meeting of council as presented. Um, if I can speak quickly to it, you know, I, I appreciate this, this is another. It's actually been quite beneficial in other areas. I know that, uh, boards, uh, they don't have to, uh, print it anymore, which has. Helped their budgets, uh, drastically that they can be on Facebook and other media sources. So I appreciate that we're still going to practice, practice the same methods, but in addition, have that, but also. Like you said, to have that, uh, uh, backup just in case, you know, so I, I, I see no problems with this, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any discussion or debate on the consensus request on the floor? Seeing none, we'll call the question that Committee Direct Administration to bring public notification bylaw. Number two zero zero two to a future regular meeting of council as presented. Council, if you could, please vote electronically now. And that is, uh, unanimous, uh, in favor. Thank you very much, Council. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Taylor?
It was just a typo problem, I think, under three one. Did you mean? Did you mean under three one to go, uh, section six oh six? And then put, uh. Um, you know, the dot, dot, is that colon, percent, colon? And then under three one one, now the words and or. So you could do it either way? Because that's what the wording in your, uh, request for decision package says, this, this is to allow flexibility. So if you could do it one way or the other way, so I think you're missing the word or. Uh, it might be, might be, uh, out of the line for. The use, and or?
Uh, through the other committee, I will confirm that, uh. With the writer of the bylaw, it was not myself, I'm only the presenter. I know that there are two portions of legislation that could follow on this, but I will confirm that, I would make sure it's correct for presentation.
Thank you, I'll make it consistent with the wording in the, um. The third paragraph under analysis where it says that there'd be an error in the newspaper. And because you did it electronically, that would be covered, and the word or recovery law.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and just to add to the, the clarifying question, it was my understanding with this bylaw that. Uh, we're, if should we pass this bylaw in council, that we would be mandating the municipality to do electronic communications. As our mandated form of electronic communications, but is the town's intention or administration's intention to continue doing print media as well for these notifications? Even though it's no longer required in the bylaw, is that?
That is, through the committee, that is correct. It is not our intention to change current forms of advertising. But this gives us flexibility that if we are faced with only having electronic at some point in time, that we're, we for that.
Good. Well, C A O?
Sorry, just the chair, maybe a piece of clarification, but this is not a bylaw that requires us to do any form of communication. It's really about the form of communication that will reach, so it's not mandating us to electronic communications. Uh, depending on it, depending on the situation, we can use it, but. It'll be, we'll use print media where it makes sense and, uh, you know, electronic means whatever we need to as well, which is.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Uh, uh, thank you, C A O. Mr. Mayor, is that good?
That's good.
Thank you very much. Uh, Council. We do, oh, sorry, that was, uh.
Just a typo correction.
Clarified, any further discussion? Seeing none, then we will move on to item, it's now five point three, but what was identified as five two, the emergency treatment fund grant application, Adman?
Thank you, Chair. So. Uh, we did receive some correspondence from H I V West Gillhead, or also known as Options. Uh, regarding support for emergency treatment fund grant applications. The, the grant application is for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Uh, federal funds that will establish mobile warming. And cooling stations and secure emergency hotel shelters. Uh, plus there is some additional, additional resources that this type of program will. Will have included such as harm reduction supplies, nurse visits and outreach services. Uh, to ensure the safety and, uh, also with the focus of preventing overdose fatalities. This, uh. This will span over the course of two winters and one summer and targeting vulnerable individuals residing in Inten. In their most vulnerable times. We, this is consistent as well with a number of other directions that council has provided. Now, the MAT program is back up and running. Uh, but this is something over and above that, this also provides, um. Spaces in emergency situations, it also provides additional resources for, uh, for those individuals who may need it, so. Uh, but it is consistent with. With other direction that also has provided, uh. They. H I V West Gillhead is approaching us because they are not eligible as nonprofit to apply for it, municipalities are. Uh, so we have actually, just due to the. The short timeline, we had to submit the grant application, breaking this for the technical act and late for. Council's consideration. But if we, uh, if we are successful, they will be administrative project, our role like this will be, uh. A minimal, minimal accounting, uh, and receiving of their rents.
Thank you, C A O. Counselor Haas?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. We, we see little risk was put, or perceived risk was put in the, uh, in the report. I guess. Is there though, because. We got some feedback the last time, and I realized it was, it was taxpayers' dollars that funded, uh, the, um. Emergency shelter that we preferred last winter, um, there was some concern on, you know, what happened. Uh, in those hotels and things like that, which then came back somewhat to the town, you know, uh, creating that, that, so. Is that still a feasible risk to the community, you know, even though we're the bankers? But we're connected to this, this, um. Yeah, there can be, we're not gonna be liable, I mean, is that, I guess, my, my first question?
Through the chair, members of council. No, I think we're fairly clear, you know, I see this with this similarity when they go. You know, the civic agency that we're talking about, maybe our funding that is actually enables these groups to some sort of. But at the end of the day, we're not in care and control of how those things are executed. You know, we'll make sure that we have a, an operating agreement that reflects that fact, but. You know. Could we be liable? It's possible, um, but I think it's. I am.
Good. Okay, you want?
Uh, I'll give you a follow up.
Thank you, thank you. I guess the other thing that I'm curious about, because in the application on page seven of fourteen. Under the town in Inten being the primary applicant and partner. Um, this last sentence there says, H I P will also facilitate connections with local service providers. And agencies to support logistics such as securing emergency shelter and transportation. So I'm just curious on what. To what degree? Is this, that statement meaning, um. When it comes, is it connecting people with options to organizations to secure emergency shelters and transportation, or are we somehow? Providing?
So through the chair, no, our intent is really not to directly progress everything throughout this project. Uh, once again, this thing has come together extremely quickly, you know, there may be some. There, there could be, uh. Some finer things, but we don't have responsibilities for these shelters or for the actual execution.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor O'Shawson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We meant that council chooses not to support. Moving this forward, what happens to the application? Understanding the application's already been submitted?
Through the chair, members of council, we would be following, uh. Uh, calling this agency to pull the application.
Thank you for what?
Please. Uh, I ask because I don't feel that we've had enough time to properly. Examine this and understand the implications of it. I've gotten several. Questions similar to Counselor Haas's regarding. Liability and, and how the, how the, the. Downflow of the dollars and responsibility and liability works going back and forth, uh, understanding. The third party provider is taking the liability and they're making an agreement in place. Ultimately, the grant is in the town, so I mean, ultimate responsibility winds up with the town. I'm, I'm not comfortable enough on this really short timeframe. To know that this is something that, understanding that this is funding that's available to municipalities. We, as the stewards of the municipality, never had an opportunity to discuss. If this is something that we wanted to do, and if it was something that we wanted to do, who our partner organization. Would be if this is something that we wanted to move forward, this is kind of thrust upon us, and I, I. I just have reservations, I, I'm just uncomfortable and I don't feel that I've got a, a good enough understanding or had a. Good enough opportunity to discuss this program and how it would work and how it would be implemented and then. All of that to be comfortable supporting it right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor O'Shawson. I have myself in queue next. I'm, I'm really glad that council has shared some of their concerns because, um, I have, uh, similar concerns. When I first heard about the project, I'd heard, uh, a mobile warming trailer. Uh, and for myself, that was, that was good, and, you know, one of the things the community was concerned about. In past years, uh, was, you know, the impact of some extreme cold events. On our, on the homeless population, but when I was reading the report, there were some things that, that I guess I wasn't expecting. Uh, and I don't have the details to know exactly how, like, anything's going to impact the community. Uh, you know, key among them were, you know, harm reduction supplies, knowing exactly what those were. Um, nurses' visits is pretty straightforward, uh, outr- now, this is the one that gets me because I don't know what this is. And I don't know how this interfaces with something like a mobile warming unit and or a hotel shelter. Outreach services to ensure safety and prevent overdose fatalities. That could be a lot of stuff. That could, you know, that could be something, uh, you know, like. You know, are we talking about the administration of, uh. Drugs to prevent, uh, overdoses at a site that's meant to be used as a warming shelter, you know, like. For myself, it was a little nebulous, so I guess I'm just looking for any clarification. The mayor looks like he wants to jump on that, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, and through the charity committee, uh, this project was, uh, we were approached by Options last week. Uh, they became aware of the funding, uh, this specific funding stream, uh, within a couple of days of its, uh. Its due date, and, and I was able to put them in contact with our C A O and then move this forward. There were two objectives that, that Options presented me with initially. One was, this is, this funding is available and apparently the federal government is very eager to give it, uh, due to the events next door. Uh, and it prevents or could prevent us from having to do emergency funding for sheltering in the middle of the winter like we did last year, so they're coming preemptively. With a plan. Now specifically to that outreach piece, uh, they mentioned outreach specifically because we have a number of folks displaced from Jasper. And over the last two weeks, we've had a. Cluster of deaths of despair from young Jasper adults who are displaced, living alone in hotel rooms, isolated from family. Friends, society, uh, dying of deaths of despair. Straight up because they're alone and, uh, our community services within our community. Was not aware that these people existed within our community because they're not regular residents. They're displaced from the disaster next door, and that specifically was how they described. The outreach angle on this to me was to go out and find these people who are displaced in our community irregularly and provide them with the supports that. Our, our regular community members already know exist and minimize the harm caused through the displacements that we're experiencing. Right now because the fires.
I'm gonna allow myself a follow up clarification. Mr. Mayor, did they mention anything about, uh, mental health supports, uh, as part of those outreach, uh, supports as well?
From my understand, I mean, this is all mental health support to some extent, uh, but yes, I think that's the intent of the, the outreach and the nursing and. To some extent is to provide, yes, safe options, but also to, uh. Prevent these people from being as isolated as they are right now.
Thank you. Counselor Chambers?
Uh, thank you through the chair. I think a little bit about outreach servicing when you get to the very. Last few pages where it talks about the. The cash and kind contributions, a lot of these, palliative health services, friendship center, often H I V. Emergency shelter, a lot of them are providing those outreach services on a regular basis and they're clearly supporting this and. Emergency shelter, a lot of them are providing those outreach services on a regular basis and they're clearly supporting this and. I really struggle to not support this. I I I will be supported. I would support this going forward, I guess is what I'm getting at because. We've sat around this table and we've said that we want other orders of government to spend on to for exactly these reasons. And I don't know how we can sit here. And debate, we know these things are happening in our community, absolutely would be great to have longer conversations, more time. Do a deep dive, go through all those things, a hundred percent. And I think even upon. The success, if if the grant was successful, I think some of those conversations probably could happen with how some of these projects are executed, but. To not support this going ahead when we made it pretty clear. Through our resolutions at Alberta municipalities, through the letters that we've sent, but to have an opportunity for funding and. And pull back, I don't think puts us in a very good position, especially this way in the season, um if we have some. Opportunity for the federal government to step in and so we don't have to have an emergency situation, um. I think that we should be all over that. I do agree through my own work that there is a very high number of. Our displaced neighbors that are struggling within our community, and I think there's a lot more we don't even know about, um. And uh yeah, I I I think, yes, the timing's a bit unfortunate, however. I think this is a bit of a strike ball there in spot and hopefully we can come up with some better. You know, longer term solutions, but I think that starting with some money and some other orders of government helping out is is a good place to start.
Council. Counselor Stashen and Counselor Taylor.
Me?
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, 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 that's all.
Well, uh my other concern that I've got is that this is not long term funding. It's a funding program for, I believe, two years. What happens in two years if there's still a need for this? Is this gonna be another program that the municipality winds up? Funding because it's valuable to the community, but the funding, original funding source is no longer there. I I'm I'm sorry, but I I can't support this. I I've I've had too many questions about. I've got too many questions about how the program can be run, about the sustainability of it, about the future of it. I've got too many concerns to just be able to to. Knee jerk react to support something just because the money's coming from a different level of government. I I have no understanding of the program, I have no understanding of of how the uh. The uh implementing partner is going to run it. I just I just have way too many questions to be able to comfortably support it at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Stashen. Counselor Taylor.
I think I support it, the reasons that you say. My question is, this isn't going to be any drug, there are not going to be any drug injection programs, any of the uh folks that are that are going to be uh. Like the broadband to to like, what do you call it?
No.
Arm reduction.
No locks.
Yeah, there's no drug injection in this.
No, uh to the chair, this is not a safe injection site, this is a. Or production site, so they will have the locks on, they will have medical professionals on site. Um just to uh Counselor Stashen's. Uh point, we don't we don't know how this is gonna look like after. Uh but the one thing we will know is that we will have a uh. The mobile warming cooling shelter available uh. Uh available to us after the project's done, what we do with that. We really don't have any idea at this point, but um it is something that will stay and sort of uh pass this uh term. Term of the grant.
I have uh then Counselor Stashen. Uh my question would be, um. What what happens if, because I mean by default, I am fairly supportive of this. I think uh it's. It's an easy win for the most part to try and uh take care of a vulnerable segment of a population. That being said, I'd like to think I'm a little bit of a realist. What happens if, because we don't have the details in front of us right now. So what happens if uh three months down the road? A segment of the community is coming to myself as a counselor and and I'm worst case scenario on this, I I acknowledge. But they say to me, do you realize that um? A trailer's been set up in my neigh neighborhood and these have been the impacts to our neighborhood and it's distinctly negative. What what ability as a council at that point do we have to say, well, we didn't have any details. When we approved this project, we just said yes uh to, and I mean, again, if I'm honest to a citizen from the community. I said yes to an agreement that was already signed and put into place that I really didn't have any. Knowledge about the details. That makes me as a counselor look bad. So what what sorts of safety measures do we have as a community? From council uh to have any input on this, uh because really the trigger's already been pulled on the project in a way.
Well. Through the chaired members of council, if we're not comfortable with it, don't we just say no, right? And we don't make the application. We we look at this again for uh, you know, potentially a future grant intake if the if they come along, um. But this is where we're at right now, I guess, you know, when it comes to the input on the project, you know, we are agreeing through this is that they will be our. Uh implementation partners, um. You know, we can always have a say in how these things are administered, right? Ultimately, we're we are the bankers and we do have some say. Uh but my my goal and what I hope is that we can be as arms length as possible in this process.
Again, just wrapping my comment up before I go to Counselor Stashen, I I'll be supporting it, uh I just think it's. Just leave it there. Counselor Stashen, Hoss and Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would actually be much more supportive of. Of the CEO Panastic suggestion of maybe taking a look at this at a future. Um future uh grants application intake. I'm just, I don't like, I'll just keep going back to how uncomfortable I am about the about how programs we run. And just for example, like the the portable warming shelters. What's this, you know, what's the security of the portable warming shelters shelters? Uh what's the mechanism in place to make sure that they're being used appropriately? And there's been other communities and I'm not gonna name names, but they've had. Similar solutions put in place and they've had deaths of individuals in the facilities that they were not even considering, so. But that's a que, that's a valid question. That's the mechanism to make sure that something like that isn't going to happen. Uh so I'm sure citizens have questions along the lines of what Council Magoon said. Where are these warning shelters going to be? Where are they going to be situated? What's the guarantee for safety for for people in surround the area? I just I I I would be much more comfortable supporting this if it came to us. If this is something the council's interested in in voting on, if this came to us from administration. With a report and full information about how the program would be run. Uh options for who they're paying for who the implementing partners are and and just and just a clear understanding and an ability. To be able to answer citizen questions if they came to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hawes, uh then Chambers then Race.
Um I'm just gonna make a quick comment about, this would have been, in my opinion. A great example for a special meeting as quickly as it needed to be done. Because when maybe we could have met with the persons and had these questions, because I had the same concern, I looked under contract with personnel. Um security is one of the things that I will also see is non existent. It says additional harm harm reduction staff during key needs. But I'm not sure what that means, and I say that uh because of those exact reasons that. Communities that have gone unnamed, they ran in, this was one of the major things they ran into, it was all volunteers trying to. Assist in keeping the area safe, um which made unfortunately unsafe for the volunteers. Um knowing now what that said community is did last year was it was a totally different, they had a warming station, but they had security, they had. Everyone uh and it was totally, I don't even know who funded it, to be honest, but it was the town. Uh I believe in kind gave them a trailer they were confusing and then somebody else did. So I I have some concerns, this is a part time outreach staff. Um so is those things gonna be staffed or not? I do agree though that, I mean, it's it's. As many questions that I have about this. Um that I I I think still could be answered, to be honest with you, even if we say this goes forward, so that at least the partner. Understands some of our concerns and can hopefully mitigate those through the initiation of this, but. It does assist in a problem we have in our community, um it and. The fact that C N O Panastic. Has stated that her kids saying this harm leads the way as possible or within the bankers. Give me some confidence and to see how this goes. I I do have shared the concerns of where does this go in two years? Because again, I have no interest as a as a municipality, I mean, maybe the council of the day will, but uh currently, in my opinion, this is not our responsibility. Um you know, maybe, you know, so financially anyway, but um. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counselor Chambers.
I think just to go back to, you know, really what's being put out there, a lot of the questions that council is asking. They don't have answers to it because they haven't received any funding. They don't have the plans, they could get fifty percent of this grant funding, maybe get twenty five percent of the grant funding, I'm assuming that's typically how grants work is. If the criteria is meet, you're you're coming up with a program that you deem in a broad sense to meet the criteria of. The grant program and what comes back, that's when you really build out these finite pieces that we're focusing on tonight and I I think. I I would like, there's no consensus on the floor, I believe.
No.
I would like to make the consensus that committee provides, um. For the committee provides consensus on the town of Pinton's Emergency Treatment Fund twenty twenty four. Grant application and partnership with off the major U S deal and and I think that that grant application is the important piece because I do believe. Um and no commitment, pardon me if I'm wrong, this coming back, if this grant is successful, um. Then it would be the creation of of all of these other bits and pieces of what this looks like and that would be the point that we would get. Okay, yes, we can hire this person for this specific job. Yes, they have approved this in its entirety, maybe they won't. Approve a warming shelter at all through the process, so. I think some of the questions we can probably get clarity on later, I think with a tight turnaround. I agree with Counselor Ross, this financially should not be our responsibility and this is an opportunity to get federal funds. To take a look at it and I think we should be at least trying that and if it needs to come back, then we have another discussion about, you know, liabilities or. Program operations once we know that the grant is successful, I I don't know if it's possible to do that, but that's my thoughts on what I'd like to put the consensus forward.
Thank you. Counselor uh Race.
Thank you, sir. You know, I can't say no to something because we have concerns and because we have a hundred questions. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to get those questions through. Um these people, get them out and then base our decision on those answers. So um I can't say no. Because I have questions too. So um I wanna ask um. C A O, how long would it take for, you know, to get a meeting with them to get our questions answered?
C A M through the chair to the rest of the committee, so. You know, that was going to be what my suggestions is, we can have it go forward today. Uh we can bring in H I V West Yellow Head and we can have the mentor questions, but uh Counselor. Uh Chambers is correct, they're not gonna know where these warming shelters are located, you know, they're not going to know those finite details that might matter later on. Um you know. But there are some things and some answers that they might may be able to provide, but knowing that, you know. Uh that was my understanding that H I V Yellow Head put this together very quickly and then. We, you know, we re received it, put in a report on Friday just prior to the agenda meeting, so this is very quick. But it was an opportunity, you know, and uh they they jumped on it, that they wanted to put something forward to us. Um so we, there is a lot of things that we're not gonna, well, at this point, we consider to bring them and even the next committee to maybe just give a presentation on. Uh their thoughts and I I know that they can provide a little bit more. Context around this and why they're looking at uh harm reduction and I know that uh you know, within the. I believe within a matter of weeks, we've had four or eight deaths uh related to Jasper and that was a big. A big reason why they got into this and started the push for uh for this type of initiative, so they can provide a lot of that. Background information of how this came about. But at this point, we don't have, well, we don't have a lot of information other than this uh document here.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, and through the chair, just uh looking for some clarification from administration. This is a grant application, I support the the consensus on the floor to move forward with the grant application, but. Should the grant application be approved and a warming shelter trailer of some sort? Is part of that grant application approval? I'm assuming that would require permitting from the municipality and and we would have some say in in where it goes.
Through merit, it depends on what they mean by mobile warming shelter. Um possibly our definitions are a little different. I thought this was going to be a uh. A death-drowning closed trailer with that's the staff that can be a part of it now, to your point, if it's a. You know, a unit that's intended to be semi-permanent or modular, for example. That was certainly required uh. Then to go through the uh the permanent process, but my understanding is that this would actually be on wheels and over time. I could be wrong, but. Um I guess those are the types of clarifications.
Mr. Remus, an answer.
Good question.
Say, I have a procedural question. So I just want to clarify a few things. Has the application already been submitted?
Yes, it had to be done. Um. Obviously, yeah.
So I guess here's my my follow up to that. Then legally, is council required to support? An already submitted application for it to be binding to the municipality?
Through the chair to members of committee. No, but this is a governance decision. This, I made the decision when this came to me to submit the application prior to. Council authorization in order to give council. The opportunity to decide if I would have decided, oh, then I made a decision on a program, so. You know, I I decided to proceed with submitting it to allow council to have this discussion retroactively. Um but whatever council decides, I will execute if council to decides not to move forward with this and will be calling the granting agency if I have an application.
Thank you. Counselor Stashen. Counselor Hoss.
So knowing all this and and hearing that I'm gonna support this in principle, but I appreciate Counselors Chambers. Comments and having a conversation with them next week or next committee meeting, I'm not sure will actually help. Until we know what funds they got and what it's gonna look like. I do, however, do believe that once, if the application is successful, we need to sit down as. As a partner and because we made that decision, it's a conversation to have with the organizations to. Cause we need to make this successful, we cannot make this, you know, be an issue in our community, so. I think at that time is when we, council and and not to get into the weeds, but here are some councils' concerns. And getting some answers to those concerns, because we uh you know, we don't want to see citizens, you know. They want this to be successful, you know, and helpful and not, so uh with that, I'm hoping that is the plan. Moving forward with this decision this evening, but that conversation happens. Once we understand where the application is at, uh because again, uh grants are. Over prescribed as we've seen, so who knows how many communities are looking for those grants, but. You know, if successful and also if it's only half or, you know, whatever it may be, then we have that conversation together, so that's my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm myself in queue next. You know what, I I've thought about this, there's. If there were just an element of warming trailers, I think I could be supportive. I think the problem is right now, I don't have enough details. On elements of the program that acknowledged around the table have no details that could potentially impact the community. Um as a counselor, one of the things I need to make good decisions is time and information. I feel like I have neither in this instance. I don't have time because the application's already been submitted and I don't have details to make a good decision on it. Uh so barring that, I I won't be uh in support. Thank you. Council, any further discussion? Counselor Chambers.
We're we're thinking through the chairs, I think we can't. So we're moving through the through the chairs. I think we can't think that. These impacts are going to happen on our community regardless. So whether or not we have a warming trailer, whether or not we have outreach happening. Our community is currently being impacted by all of these things in a very erratic manner. They may have recantment near their house. They may have people wandering through their neighborhoods. It's our. Our citizens that are finding these residents in hotel rooms. It's all of those things. So we are being currently impacted. This gives us the potential, in my opinion, to. Try to maybe control some of these wild card factors. So. I I respect that there is a lot of, a lot of things that aren't answered, but I I do believe that this is a a small piece of something that could potentially help.
Mister Mayor.
And thank you. And through the chair, just to committee, uh I tend to echo councillor Chambers's statements. These effects are already in our community. People are already struggling in our community. I would not like to be in a situation in January, February this year, making decisions on emergency sheltering funding. Knowing that we could have gotten a grant to do this and we just gone for it back in November. Uh, so I'm giving you some. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hawes.
One other quick question, I guess. End of the day, worst case scenario. They're successful with the grant. They come back to us, but they can't answer these questions. They can't. The money doesn't apply for that or whatever. There is the option to say we're pulling our partnership, correct? If they, because I mean, there's other grants you can get, but you say, look, things have changed. We don't want the grant anymore. Is that? Is that an option?
Yeah, through the chair to members of council. We can, I I wouldn't recommend that if we wanted to pursue further in cases. That that does harm your uh your reputation and your. Commitment to the project and granting agencies typically don't appreciate that. Uh, pulling an application. You know, has minimal effect, but pulling in a few days uh before anybody's actually looked at it is very different than. They go through the entire process, making the reports. Their my my suggestion is if council likes it in principle, um. That would be if we march forward. If if council is not comfortable with the details or um, you know, the concept, then. If we made that decision sooner rather than later.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you. Councillor Chambers.
Uh, maybe just one quick thing for future. One thing that would have probably helped. Me go through the process, although I obviously can support it, is understanding what the. What specifically the grant was and what specifically the criteria of the grant was, just to be able to read that. What is that linked to the federal funding? What objectives were they trying to meet? You know, what what were those pieces that would have helped form that a little bit? Because I think it would have been easier to link, just for the future, to link some of what was written. To some of what they were trying to achieve, because a lot of the lingo that you're using, you're using that lingo so that you're successful. Um, it's just a fact. That's how you can book your event process. So I think if we could maybe narrate some of the lingo within. What was submitted to the criteria of what are the objectives of the federal grantings? That would have been helpful to make some of those connections for future.
Councillor Taylor.
If you ask this, I don't know if it's go on, but since we're the primary applicant, uh we get the money. We get the money and then they work on their implementation plan. Can they at least come back to that implementation plan and run it and explain it to you? Let's see if you can see any heads up. That we might be able to uh. To uh mitigate in the community because we are the primary applicant in charge at night. So it'd be fair to ask them to run the implementation plan at least by you to see if uh you have any uh. Thing that uh that might cause us a concern. Through the chair and members of council. Yeah, the the intent is not they're going to, we would just issue the money. Based on the application. They need to leave them down to us. We still have a safe project. But really, it's a, like you said, it's it's more. You know, this is a partnership and we'll be, you know, working with them and, you know, so they can accommodate some of our concerns, but. Uh, the actual implementation will be done through this this organization. But, you know, we're still. We're still, no matter what, going to be somewhat involved. Uh, you know, we'll have. Some level of say within the project, uh as long as it doesn't stray too far of what we've agreed. To within this sort of application. Um, so we can certainly, we'll always look to alleviate any community concerns that may come. But it's not going to be a material change to what we've included in this application.
Thank you.
Myself, a question for admin. Admin presenting this report. Uh, was there any specificity around what harmed essential harm reduction supplies are? Other than naloxone? And basic care items? Because here's my concern. It says the um essential harm reduction supplies such as naloxone and basic care items. What else, though, is there?
Through the chair, I I can answer that.
Okay, and that's fine. You don't can. That's fine. Thank you. Councillor Hawes.
So if, if you may, if you're alluding to the possibility of there being a safe injection site. That is a whole different level. If if that's, this is, this is. To protect them from the elements and other things is what this is in regards to, but if you, you know, if you're, if that is the concern. Um, it would be a whole. Level of new conversation that we would be having that isn't this. Uh, and that's just based on my experience. Professionally knowing sites that are there, that there's, there's a lot that has to happen before that happens. Um, and we don't have an injection site being hinted currently, so this would not. I believe apply for us. It wouldn't, yeah. It's basically, yeah, a lot what. Help does, but this would be on a more uh. Outreach. They don't have to come to them. They will go to them or help could they go to Freddy's, so.
C A O.
Through the chair, sir. I I can add a little bit more. I just looked under one of the activity titles, but. Uh, distribution of naloxone kits, uh safer sex supplies and basic medical supplies, I can mobile stations. And through outreach. This activity addresses overage prevention by providing access to essential resources.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chambers, did you want to?
Yeah, just one, but I I just don't believe that the federal government would have the jurisdiction to sign. A safe injection injection site without provincial approval. So I can't imagine that going straight federally to. We never have to go through our provincial um health ministry, so I I.
Castle, any further discussion on the councillor?
And just one, a guess for, naloxone is not a unique thing. You can get that at our health. You could get that at any pharmacy. In our community, you can get it at the health unit. You can get it at a lot of places. Uh, so it's not a unique. Um, kit and anyone can use it and there's training available. So, but just if anybody's wondering what the what that's about. It's it's already available in our community.
Castle, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh then we will. Perfect. Get that up on the screens. We'll read it one more time and then we'll call the question. Council called the question that committee provides consensus on the town of Hinton's. Emergency Treatment Fund Twenty Twenty Four Grant Application. In Bart Partnership with Options HIV West Yellowhead. Council, please vote electronically now. And that is carried five to do, five to two with councillors Maguino Stashik against. Council, anything else on that? Seeing none, then we will move on to reporting and I will start to my left with councillor Chambers. Councillor Chambers.
I just was able to attend the uh Remembrance Day Ceremony at the Hinton Legion, which was. Absolutely packed. That was very well done. Really nice to have um the regimental uh papers and terms. Uh, present for the event. It was a very, very well done and well supported by.
Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, and Remembrance Day Ceremony on Monday, fantastic. We had the sheriff's pipe and drums band come out. Live music for the whole thing was fantastic. Uh, this week councillor Race and I are going to meet at F C S S A A and we've got the budget open houses tomorrow and the next day. Uh, if anyone may make it to those, we did not have a big uptake of citizens today, but who knows what tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Councillor Taylor.
I went to the uh Remembrance Day Ceremony as well and uh. I can't add anything to that. Now, I will thank the uh, what do you call that? The uh, Waste Authority meeting on Monday. So if anybody has any uh concerns or things you want me to bring there, let me know.
Thank you. Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir. So um I will lead the mayor. To the um F C S S, he brings to the city. And then on Monday, I counted ten votes because I'll be an extra teaching for uh community futures and that's, that's it.
Uh, councillor O'Shannon. And councillor Hawes.
I'm going to report.
Oh, a C A O uh reporting.
Thank you, Chair. I've included the uh full word twenty twenty-four operating highlights. So if there's any questions that. You may have to answer that document, we have the answer.
Uh, council, any questions on that? Um. Seeing none, then we will, pardon me, we will move on to correspondence. Um. I do have a question on correspondence, C A O. Uh, in discussion with some of my colleagues earlier this evening. Um, really, as it relates to the letter provided by the minister, um and um. Basically concerns about uh the second paragraph on the first page of that letter. Regarding a question about unpaid municipal fines, I can confirm the N G A does not allow. For these fines to be added to the municipal tax role. Uh, that's a concern for me because that was one of the driving influences for myself. Um, as it was related to the short, non-principle, short-term rental bylaws, uh and really our ability as a community. To have enforceable policy and admitted at the time and indicated that uh that was something we could do. Is there any follow-up uh on that?
Okay. The letter is correct. The N G A does not allow specifically for the added municipal fines. The N G A takes certain enforcement activities. It will give those specific rights through the N G A. To put that onto municipal taxes. Municipal, any municipal banks or bylaws don't move through that process. In order to. Attach municipal of fun, municipal fines to the individual, you have to first get a finding of guilt. You know, um, so you do have to go through the court of queens bench to get that requested. And they do have to be found guilty. That's a whole different thing. And that's governed by the provincial. Um, offenses procedure act, not the N G A. So you could do it. It's not through. Uh, specific authorized expenses that are outlined in the N G A. You have to go through, um. You have to go through the court process to get that completed.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, here, if you're okay with it, I'll just sort of restate what I think I heard. So we're not actually approaching those fines through taxation through the N G A. It's actually a a court-based finding because they've they've breached uh some municipal bylaw. They're found guilty in court and then that can be added to their uh municipal taxation issue.
You have your option when you put in court, but all municipal fines or tags go through that same process.
Okay.
So you you can request that to be attached, but once it goes to the court of queens benches and through that piece of legislation. The province takes their cut. Um, but you can request that to be attached to the individual. You can be requested that to be added to the tax role. Or in most cases that you go through. You know, you you try to get the fine paid or. Uh, due for the individual and then you would likely proceed in earth. Proceed to get a stop order, but all of those are done with a separate piece of legislation.
Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you very much. Castle Race.
Thank you, sir. So Minister Maguire is also, he's also commented on the short-term levels. And he suggested that we contact the town with Fenmore. To get information on what they're doing. I've given all that information to council already. So I um, well, back at, I was looking for this. Important. So um, you tell me when that will be done.
Through the chair. I don't have an exact date, uh but we are working.
Thank you.
Castle, any, Mister Mayor.
Uh, thank you. And just to to follow up uh for council information, if you haven't seen on your councillors, we do have a Zoom or Teams meeting. Uh, with the Minister of Tourism and Sport to discuss uh this issue on November eighteenth.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Council, any further discussion on councillor Taylor?
Oh, a question to the town manager, I mean, um. Have we received or is there any information out there regarding R C M P funding to uh municipalities? I I heard recently that there was a um. Direction to uh help fund uh an increase coming up in the R C M P funding. Does that? Made its way down to us, so that we understand the implications of that on our budget in two thousand twenty-five?
Through the the mayor, um. That is, that is for municipalities under five thousand.
Oh, just five thousand.
So they have a different, so. They have a very different relationship with how they fund our C M P and it's actually based on a percentage basis. And the the increase of our C M P that everybody's seeing, they have agreed to. Offset the spike uh this year to give a little smaller municipality. Chance to clean prepare a little bit uh to prepare for next year.
Nothing is your fault.
Okay. Councillor Hawes.
Yeah, I just wanted to seek consensus to accept the correspondence for information, please.
Thank you. Councillor Hawes. Castle, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, then as soon as it appears, we will call it a question. Call the question that committee accept the correspondence for information. Please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And then that brings us to our closed session items. Council, uh councillor Hawes.
Like, can we move to a closed session?
Well, council, any discussion? Mister Mayor.
Before we go into closed session, do we want to make a motion to go past eight o'clock?
Yeah, so councillor Hawes, um, let's see here. Are you okay with withdrawing your?
Yeah.
Consent. Castle, any uh any issue with councillor Hawes withdrawing? Very well, the floor is open. Mister Mayor.
I will see consensus that can be go past.
Very well. So we have a consensus to extend. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call that question uh as soon as it locks up. Council, we'll call the question uh that committee seek consensus to move uh past the uh eight P M marker. All those in favor, please indicate, or pardon me, geez, I apologize. Please vote electronically. And that is carried unanimously.
Go against. Yeah, I voted against.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't see that. Councillor Taylor.
Yeah, one of that, sorry.
So that was six to one with councillor Taylor against.
Thank you.
And council, councillor Hawes.
If the move, make motion to move into closed session.
Very well. Just wait for that to appear. Council, uh any discussion? Seeing none, move that, uh committee move into closed session to seven forty-nine. Please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. We will move into closed session and we'll just give administration a chance to.